All right. Actually, five thirty two P M. We do have a call. We call the meeting to order. JB hadn't gone here yet.
I guess Stacy's coming. Stacy basically said.
Stacy's fine. Stacy leaves some prayers and prayers.
That'd be great. Well, Christ is heavenly, Father. We just come to you today, Lord. We just thank you for allowing us to be able together like this and have these meetings, Lord. Lord, we just thank you for watching over the city. We thank you for the rain that we've received. Lord, just be with this meeting tonight. Let each and everything that's done and said be for glory to you and to be for the benefit of this city. Lord, we just thank you again in your most holy and precious name. Amen.
Let your legion do the fire of the United States of America into the Republic for which it claims one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and freedom of the heart.
Like you said, y'all have a safe net. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mayor, Council, Administration, I want to thank you for this opportunity. We want to thank you for the opportunity to depart in the process to begin with. I'll make this short. When A L puts a proposal together, we'll have to focus on three key areas, service, because without service, nothing else matters. Pricing, if the service offered, it has to be done at a fair price and a reasonable price. It works for all parties. Third is our core values, and that's something we want to stress morality, dedication to one's craft, and community involvement. I could go on. Know that win or lose, A L is committed to the community in preference. We do a lot here, and we have a lot of customers out here in the rural area. So I want to make sure everybody understands that we're not going anywhere, win or lose. When we started out in rural Breckenridge four years ago, our first items were to sponsor the athletics department with Casey Kirsten. We've done that for the last three years. We've been heavily involved with them. This year, we won the chamber. We'll need to sponsor for Frontier Days, the golf tournament, Booming Fest, and we'll continue to be involved. This is where our customers shop, and so we're going to be involved. With the school, we're going to be involved because this is where our customers' children go to school. Know that we also give to Jeremy West as a school district by sponsoring polos and moisture-wicking T-shirts for the district services personnel. When he came to me last year, we were talking, he said, you know, I don't have it in the budget. I said, don't worry about the budget. Just give me the sizes. So attending the Rotary Club meeting in the fall, Calvin Best brought up the fact that they needed cameras for their audiovisual department in order to be able to stream football games and sporting events. We jumped in and helped out there. We also helped the school by taking asbestos long ago, ethanol charge to help the city out. So it's something that we try to be involved with. We included with our proposal free services to include tire trailers, e-waste, twenty-three roll-offs, which can be used however the city sees fit, and then water treatment facility sludge for no charge. Please know A L cares about every community that we're involved with. We consider Breckenridge to be one of our communities, even though we're not picking up in the city at this moment. I want to thank you for your time, and we appreciate this opportunity. But have a wonderful one.
All right, we'll go to our staff report, and we'll start with our Chief of Police first. Chief, all your needs.
Thank you, Mr. Honor.
Yes, sir.
I've been privileged today presenting our Employee of the Month with Jocelyn, as well as Steve, our supervisor for animal control from local district here. Thank y'all. First off, like I said, Jocelyn has experienced the animal control since the beginning when we first got here. We have gone through a lot of changes and had personnel, but Jocelyn has been consistent. She has exhibited the values, the bright values that we've asked for in the city, but more importantly, she has just continued to be a constant servant of the people. Jocelyn has shown us that the community is important. She works along with our volunteers. She also works along with our community as far as going out and doing the enforcement. She has been a top producer as is going out and taking enforcement action as well as continuing to work with the courts. Recently, we've been going through a process of violent vicious dogs and dangerous dogs, and she has been a top leader getting out and getting us involved with the court and continue to follow that thing. So it is my privilege and honor tonight to present Jocelyn as Employee of the Month for the for the City of Breckenridge. So thank you very much for that. We sit over here out of the way. She's the shy one who says the best. Yes, thank you very much.
But thanks, Chief. Well, I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Mayor, thank you, Commissioners. A couple of things I wanted to go over tonight. I mean, first of all, I'm very happy to introduce our new Public Works Director, Keegan Burns. He want to stand up? He comes to us from, most recently from New Mexico, but he has worked at the city of Tyler. He has served in the military, and he has worked for three different federal governments and all in water, wastewater, project management, roads, environment. So just wanted to welcome Keegan. Did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I think she pretty much covered it, but you know, I'd like to thank everybody here for allowing me the opportunity, especially Miss Cynthia. This is kind of an old dream of mine. I've been with that for a little bit, but you know, it's like I said, it's an old dream with the new administration and all the changes. I haven't had the opportunity to live it, so I appreciate you guys giving me the chance to hopefully help out and make some infrastructure improvements.
Do you want to talk about your family and their process of moving here?
Yeah, so I spent the past three years, actually spent the past three years building systems on the Navajo Gallup Water Spot Project in the Four Corners area. The Bureau of Reclamation, that is, but construction management and project management type stuff. So anyhow, but my family is third children there in Farmington, and yep, once they finish their school year, my wife, she's a school psychologist there at the school, and my son, he's fourteen, he'll be a freshman that's coming here. Yeah, the end of the month, they'll be joining me here in Breckenridge. Yeah, we'd just like to be, you know, a member of the, you know, members of the community and help out. That's a, that's a big, big reason. You know, why I want to be in a community and working in a place like this. Just somewhere where you ever be connected with the work. It's a little bit easier to do it when you are. So, but yeah, like I said, I'm honored. I appreciate it. It was better.
You've actually been on board for about two weeks now, so baptism by fire with all the rain and issues with our station. So you're doing a great job. A couple of things I did want to let you know, we did, when it comes to the budget, we did get our estimated values from, and I sent those to you, but we didn't get them from the Stevens County Appraisal District. Essentially, last year, the value was certified values were two hundred ninety-nine, three seventy-five, six oh six, and this year it's three oh four, six oh nine, eight nine nine, and that's again preliminary. I did talk to Will, and they did, they were conservative in these. So hopefully, we like it when they're conservative. So if anything, maybe the values go up a little bit versus down because we present the first half of the budget to you, and that will be July, based on the preliminary values. So it's nice if it comes in higher, if we kind of adjust those numbers a little bit. But anyway, so I wanted to go over that with you. And then our next steps as far as it concerns our budget and strategic planning, like we did when we first initiated the strategic plan, and we went out to the citizens after we had talked to staff and after we had talked to you guys, and we're going to be going back to them May twenty-seventh, and going over basically where we've been, the progress that we've made, looking at our strategic plan, making sure just getting input from the citizens, are these still the priorities and getting that feedback. We will also do a citizens survey as well and get that feedback. So we've also been meeting with staff, obviously, and getting budgets together and talking about priorities. We've kind of gone over some of those with you all a couple of times in the past. So that's where we're at, and the May twenty-seventh meeting is going to be a good meeting. At the same time, trying to kill two birds with one stone, we had a comprehensive development plan, and you guys approved that. But the second part of that that we're working on at the staff level still is updating the zoning ordinance, and that's going to be a major update. So every citizen will be emailed, will be mailed on that to let them know what that proposed updated zoning plan is. But before that happens, we're going to present it to the citizens in a public meeting. So we'll have the consultants there. We'll have graphics there. People can see the changes. There's really not many substantive changes. I think the changes that we have really are in alignment with our fifth tenant of our strategic plan, which is promoting transparency and communication. So we're really trying to update our nomenclature with our zoning. So like, for instance, right now, we have R one, R two, R three, and R four for residential. We're going to update that to single family, and then it will have the square footage of that property. So it would be S F five thousand, F F, S F six, six thousand, S F seven five hundred. And that denotes the size of the piece of property in the zoning. Anyway, so we're excited about that, getting that input. From there, it will go to P and Z, which of course is a public meeting, public hearing and all that. We advertise all that, and then it'll come to you guys finally. And we're trying to get that over the goal line by the end of the year. So there are some notifications that have to go out and advertisements on that as well. But again, that meeting is May twenty-seventh. We'll be talking about it a lot as we go forward. It's a Tuesday night. It'll be five thirty to seven thirty. We haven't discussed the location. You know, before we had it at the chamber, so I haven't contacted them, but now that we have a bigger space, I'm thinking we can probably accommodate that meeting here and use our TVs for display on some different things. So it's not for sure, but I think that's what we're waiting for. That's what I've got over you on that.
For the upcoming events for May, this week is Municipal Clarks Week. From the eleventh to the seventeenth is National Police Week. And on the thirteenth, we've got a special meeting to canvas the votes from the election that happened on Saturday. So we'll have that. That will finalize everything. May the fifteenth is Bolt Pickup, as always, the third Thursday of each month. You can sign up. Any resident can sign up. They have signed up on the Friday before. Can sign up online by calling or through text micro. The eighteenth to the twenty-fourth is Public Works Week, so what we show is the appreciation throughout the month for multiple different departments. Then on the twenty-seventh is the Strategic Plan Meeting and Zoning Meeting that Cynthia was just talking.
Be no argument on that. We'll go to the consent agenda. Gentlemen, if y'all check, read number four through nine, and I'll take a motion on both, do all those as one.
We move to approve considering items four through nine as presented.
Second, a motion, second, all in favor? None opposed. Thank you. We'll go to the public hearing items, and it's five forty-six P M. We'll open this. Go to item eleven, ten, I'm sorry, conduct a public hearing regarding an amendment to the zoning ordinance to specify remiss residential uses for recreational vehicles within the city of Breckenridge.
There were no speakers for that.
Item eleven, conduct public hearing regarding request to replat the property located at twelve hundred Wedge Second, currently legally described as Mountain Heights Edition, Block Five, Lots One, Two, and Three into two lots. The owner plans to place a mobile home on the north lot.
And there was no one to speak.
All right. Then it will close the public hearing at five forty, five forty-eight. All right, on our action items, we're going to move to action item number twenty, then we'll jump back up and then start number twelve. Item twenty, discuss any necessary action regarding the warrant of a solid waste or resurfaces. Turn it back to our city manager.
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, we have an R F P out, and we did receive the submissions from that. We had submissions from A E L, C W S, Frontier Waste Solution, and Republic Services. We did have an internal committee that scored all of the submissions. You all had a copy of those as well. And so what you're seeing here is basically that's the total of the scores with all the scores. We had five or six different scores internally. So Republic scored five seventy point oh eight, A E L five sixty-seven, Frontier was five forty-one, C W S was five twenty-seven. When you look at that, I think some of the things that we wanted to call to your attention, we put a spreadsheet in your packet, and we're looking at, obviously, pricing is a large one. We're looking at the equipment. That is a big one. The franchise fee, that's pretty much the same across the board. It's all five percent from all the participants. You look at the service experience, how long they've been in business, what size city they have experience in servicing. And then, you know, some of, you know, I could put it under category of extras. Bulky waste was the same across the board. Pretty much the scheduled rate increases were the same across the board. I think a couple of things, just to start out with some of the main differences. While A E L scored, I mean, they were cheaper on the actual rate. Republic came in, they're the only ones, and this was an issue for us and is an issue, and you guys will determine, you know, as we're looking at lowest and best, how you want to apply that. Republicans, the only one that has single access trash truck. And so unfortunately, when we're looking at the condition of our roads, we have a lot of asphalt roads that are not in the best condition. When you look at, you know, trash trucks going on the side of that road, maybe they don't have a curb and gutter. That makes it more susceptible to breakdown with a heavier piece of equipment. So that, I think, made a difference for a lot of the internal folks scoring. The other thing, when you look at some of the extras, I think, you know, they're all providing, I believe, they're providing city services free of charge so to our city services, I mean, city facilities, excuse me. So that's our, the city facilities, they're going to give that to us free of charge. They're all doing that. One of the standouts with Republic is they are offering sixty free roll-offs annually, which is a huge, and you heard A E L, although it wasn't, and I, it wasn't in your proposal that I saw, but I did call and get that figure of twenty-three annually. They're going to offer twenty-three annually, but it wasn't in the proposal, so that's why you don't see it on the spreadsheet. But that, that comes out to quite a bit. So if you remember, our convenience station is where we have roll-offs station, and so we give one free dump a month to our residents when they have a water bill, and then everybody, I mean, they're charged depending whoever wants to use it is charged. But every time those roll-offs are filled, we're paying to haul those off. And so there is that cost difference in that price, and so that's something to keep in mind. And you can see the other ones that are written on there. So I mean, those are the only things I just wanted to highlight when we're looking at the proposals. You know, I would like to express, I mean, I know a lot of work goes into, certainly on staff side, so I want to express appreciation to the staff that participated in scoring and, you know, reading through all the submissions, but certainly to everybody that submitted. You know, we know that that takes a lot of work on all's part as well. So we absolutely appreciate that. We're just trying to get the best deal that we can for our citizens.
Hello.
So I would hope you all have any questions or?
Y'all make a motion on that?
Move your worth of solid waste bid contractor Republic Services and offer us a city and your negotiation contract.
Second, all motion, second, all in favor? I have none opposed. Thank you, Neil. We'll back and pick up for starting from. Y'all are all welcome to stay as long as you want. We didn't want to break it out. That's his case, but thank you so much for the call. All right. Thank you, buddy. We'll go to faction out of twelve. Discussion any necessary action regarding a request to replat the property currently legally described as Mountain Heights Edition, Block Five, Lot One, Two, and Three into two lots. The property owner plans to place a mobile home on the north lot.
Okay, well, you can see from the map there, right, the black lines describe how it's currently divided, and then the green line is how it is replatted. So the bottom, yeah, you can see each lot will be twelve thousand square feet, and P and Z heard and considered this item and does recommend approval.
Questions?
I move to approve the replat as presented.
Motion, second, all in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Item thirteen, discussion in necessary action regarding approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, amending chapter twenty-two zoning for the Breckenridge Code of Ordinances.
So on the next couple, I'm just gonna, I'm going to categorize these. You know, we've been doing cleanup ordinance items, you know, since I've been here. So the next section of several ordinance updates are pretty much cleanup. They're not substantive changes. So what we have here is that while it's not essentially, I mean, recreational vehicles is only addressed in our traffic section of our ordinance. It is addressed in the zoning section only in that when it comes to the uses of recreational vehicles, it does not allow them in residence, in area zone residences, but we don't have any, other than that, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that prohibits recreational vehicles from being lived in on residential properties. That obviously is the intention, and not many cities allow that. I don't know of any that do. And so all this is, is just cleaning it up and placing it in the zoning ordinance as well. This is where it's currently located, but that's in chapter twenty of our tract.
Other question, Cynthia, on the, when I read through this earlier, the word trailer is what throws me off. What that can be, is that a trailer like flatbed trailer, or is that a trailer like a mull-hump, as they've been called?
I'm sorry.
Trailer is the word. The only question I have on here is the word trailer. What is that described in our, what is a trailer in ordinances? Is it a?
So when it comes to, this is in our ordinance under, and so what that is saying, you can't park a trailer. That's one of the things you can't park for more than twenty-four hours. You have to just hide, basically put it in the backyard, and you still can do that. We're not changing chapter twenty.
No, but what he, what he said, you're going to be.
I believe what they're, that's the noting is like a utility trailer.
Right.
This is telling you like a boat, utility trailer, camper, anything just something like that. That's the trailer describing here.
Okay, so we need to, and this is what we've got here. So my question on this is, I'll give you an example. Mine is a prime example. Mine's all the way in the back, and if you pull up to the front of my house, you don't see my utility trailer, my flatbed trailer, but if you go down the street half a block and look back, there's not a fence on that side. So is that, is that what we're meaning, or is it just not in the front, like it says, not front side, or I remember. Not in your driveway side yard or front yard?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
So if it's in the backyard.
It's there.
Yes.
Okay, that, I'm just trying to clarify, because trailer, I mean, the mull-humps have also been called trailers over the past. I'm like, okay, are we specifying flatbeds, utilities? Because we have a lot of guys in this town that pull trailers every day of their lives. So. Thank you.
Depends on what part of the state, Sheriff, probably.
This is true.
In this part of the, in this part of the world, we do what trailer do.
Any other questions then? Not have someone make a motion?
Move to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-five oh seven as presented.
Second, motion, second, all in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Item fourteen, discussion any necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh eight, canceling the approved replat to property known as one oh five North Rose, legally described as lots one, two, three, and east half of lot four, block seven, original town of Breckenridge. And property known as three seventeen West Elm, legally described as lot five and six, and the west half of lot four, block seven, original town of Breckenridge.
So essentially, what we have here is the P and Z and you guys all approved a replat, if you remember. And the owner has not filed that replat yet. Subsequent to you guys approving that, P and Z and you guys approving that, they have decided to go another route. And so what we have to do is take official action to show that we canceled that replat, even though it has not been filed, and that's all that this action is to do tonight.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight as presented.
Motion, second, all in favor? None opposed. Item fifteen, discussion in necessary action, approving the first reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten regarding the Breckenridge E D C and soggy dog wine and brew performance agreement.
So I didn't get a chance to bring you that paper, but do I need to just go ahead and stay from this?
So on this one, we're just bringing this back, and we do have Michael Paris here, so I'm going to have him come up. We just needed to clarify, you guys, if you remember, you guys already looked at this item, but it wasn't complete. We just needed to clarify, you guys, if you remember, you guys already looked at this item, but it wasn't complete. So Michael Paris is here, he's our new E D C director, and I'll let him go over what what it is you guys are approving.
And our, and and first vote officially, I mean, it's Michael Paris, I'm the executive director of Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation. And the first item that you did approve, we read that or I highly read that as sixty thousand dollars in loan and also ten thousand dollars when officially the bill were opened. And in reviewing what our predecessor had done and what the E D C had approved, I'm not sure that was clear when that was brought to you. And so I'm here to tell you, and I think it's in your memorandum, what you have is a sixty thousand dollar loan. And the performance of that is based on payroll, I believe, not two hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. You also have another twenty-five thousand dollar loan based on the sales tax revenue that's created up to five thousand dollars for that year. And so we will evaluate both of those items each year after our collection of payments are are come due. And then through that evaluation, we'll determine if it's forgiven or we will determine if it is unpaid in that direction. Then you also see a grant of forty, little over forty-three thousand dollars. I believe that was just to help with the increased property value that could happen once that place does open up. And then you also have had a an official opening, a grand opening. We will present a seven dollar check for ten thousand dollars. Any questions on that? But once we have that preparation, we're gonna go back and restructure the performance agreement to reflect that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the first read of resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten as presented.
Second, motion is second, all in favor. None opposed. Item sixteen, discussion in necessary action regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven, conveying a portion of morning side drive in the county club, you stated addition of the city of Breckenridge.
So mayor and commissioners, what this action will do will basically ban and close that road to its morning side. If you can see that map where that blue arrow is south. There, well, and Ronald Duran is here, he's the property owner, he owns on both sides. And so unfortunately, he, there's a road there, although it's really not that great of a road, and he's done a lot of work on it himself. But it was platted. Since it was platted, we're going to have to close it and we would deed it to both sides of the property owner. He just has, happens to be on both sides. If he ever wants to develop that, he'll have to come back because you can't land lock and, you know, he might have to replat, you know, whatever. I don't think he plans to do that, but he can speak to that. But right now, he would just like to close. He's getting a lot of traffic through there. People coming down into that property and there's really no reason to come down that way. So all this is, and it does reserve, just so you know, it does reserve an easement for the utilities. Because a little bit south of there, we do have some utilities, the water to go down there. So that's all this action is.
Any questions? Move to approve ordinance. Sorry, move to approve ordinance.
Twenty twenty-five dash eleven as presented.
Motion in a second, second, all in favor. None opposed. Thank you. Item seventeen, discussion in necessary action regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh eight, amending various sections in Article One, Chapter Five of Breckenridge Code of Ordinances to update the phrase dangerous buildings to substandard buildings.
So again, this is really just to clean up and I'm gonna say that we're gonna align with our goal of number five, being transparent and having clear communication. What this does, it just clears up that language. So and Jay, if you want to ask any more questions, he's here, he can respond. But all we're doing is switching out that that language for substandard from dangerous. So that people, when they get these notices, they they're not feeling like there is danger. Because some of, now, some of them, they will be, but he, we don't want to scare people if it's not, and it's things that can be fixed. Of course, we want to get compliance, and if they can get compliance on these items that are substandard, that's our goal. So that all that ordinance does is just updates those two words instead of using dangerous, we're gonna use substandard.
Well, that might save a lot of time if people coming down here wondering why it's it's that way. So, yeah, this will probably help in the long run. Language of it. No questions. Have a motion then, please.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero eight as presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor. Item eighteen, discussion in necessary action regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh nine, amending chapter five, buildings and structures, Article Five, flood damage prevention, section five dash eighty-eight, floodways, the Breckenridge Code of Ordinances.
So again, what this does, you know, you've got floodways and floodplains, and there are rules of encroachment into each of them. And if you are going to build in a floodplain or a floodway, there's specific criteria, but that actually comes down from from higher level than us on how you have to do that. And what we're doing is in our ordinance, we're adding floodplain to that. Because we've had some situations and circumstances, and Jay, you can speak to that if you want to come up to the podium where we've had people encroaching in those areas. And we just want to make it clear that even in the floodplain, they can't approach into that area. Do you want to go up to the podium in case they have questions?
No. What we've had is, usually our current ordinance talks about floodway.
Right.
And there's been some areas that I've walked, gone into and inspected and everything, and they're actually in the floodplain here. So to be able to actually address that as well, for one to add it, was under emotions, the actual floodplain as well to the, yes, terminology.
That I really just want to make sure of.
Yes, sir. Yes, Wes.
Yeah, I was there that day. I was walking in my bare feet, I should crawl through. We're almost there, didn't have a little more rain. No other question, have a motion on that?
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine as presented.
Motion second, second, all right, all approved. Yep. None opposed. Thank you. Item nineteen, discussion or any necessary action regarding approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten, amending chapter ten, Article One, Division Two, Section Ten dash eight of the Breckenridge Code of Ordinances to remove the requirement that notification be sent by certified mail.
So with the uptick in code compliance, it really is making a difference when you're sending out those notifications. I mean, Jay is doing a great job, so people are getting notified and he tries to make contact with them first. But at the end of the day, when, you know, he's got caseloads of, you know, sixty and eighty per month, three hundred, you know, that adds up. And so you can see, I mean, just three hundred is gonna be three thousand dollars to send versus two hundred and seven by regular mail.
So just to clarify something, my my only issue with this, and and Jay, please help me understand this, I, or Malcolm, I knew you had to do it too. If we don't send it certified and we just send it standard mail, how do we know they got it? I mean, granted, we know the mail runs, but that's a built-in excuse for them to come in here and argue and say, no, if we send it certified, and yes, it is an expense. Right now, we're gonna have a higher expense at the beginning. But as we get codes enforced and as we start to gain some ground on this, it's gonna go down. But at least with that certified mail, we know they got it. You know what I mean? We know beyond a shadow of doubt. So we have to take that next action, whatever that next action is. We're in compliance. Does that make sense? I know it's not a state law. I'm just saying for us to not have to argue with the.
Maybe the next action is certified than the first.
Well, at some point, more than likely, they probably would maybe get that at some point later, but I mean, there's already, he's already had some contact with these people. So the, you know, knowing that they got it. Now, where where that comes into play is we do have a lot of absentee
That's.
property owners. So again, what what, we're just bringing this forward because as we are spending money on code compliance, it's costing more than we budgeted. And so, you know, this is a way that we could cut it down. I understand what you're saying, but I think at some point, maybe, you know, the second notice is sent via certified versus that person.
And that's what Blake was, because that that was my, in in my only experience, and Jay, you and I talked about this, I actually know an absentee owner that received a letter. And I don't think he sent it certified, I think he sent it standard. But that's, I'm just trying to eliminate that built-in excuse because it's already gonna be a fight. We all know it is. People don't like to be told what to do with their property. Right? It it's a fight. So by us doing this, saying we're gonna send it out, are we also saying that the second notice is going to be, or what's that next process?
It's not in the ordinance written that the notice be sent by certified mail, no, sir. Now, I will tell you this as a.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
What I have been doing, if I've had something come in to be returned by mail, I've actually posted the property itself. I've taken and made copies of notices, laminate them, and zip tie them to the fence, going into the gate, put it on the door, go by with a door tag. Those type of things also in wait a period of time to see if I get noticed that way as well. Making efforts, we've just brought on a new program where I can do a lot of research and find, give me phone numbers, it tells me this person's I can kind of deceased and things like that right off the bat, so.
That, and again, and it's mildly, and that just because, like, my experience has been, especially when you're dealing with rental properties, which is where a lot of our absentee owners or a lot of our rental properties are owned by absentee owners, you know, Rouse's Metroplex, for example. If you put it on there for the tenant, they don't get it to the landlord, and then all of a sudden, the citation goes to that landlord or or bill, you know. Malcolm can attest to, there's a property kind of close by me where we tried to get a hold of Moot Two, never could. You guys mowed it, sent them the bill for a hundred bucks, he swore he never got it. Luckily, I knew they got mowed and came down here and paid them and we got it straightened out, but that guy's in Illinois. And then half the time, he's not even in our country. To be honest. So there's a, that's why I'm saying, does the certification, does the certified mail eliminate anything for us? Like, if we end up in Steve Spoons' office?
The the state ordinance doesn't even, doesn't have, you don't have to send it by certified mail at all. And once it smells, they consider that as a certain purpose.
Okay, so.
Nothing precludes us. What I would say, though, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but for the most part, I think this would save us a lot of money. Now, nothing precludes us from sometimes, I mean, Jay's very good and he's got a lot of experience, so maybe sometimes we would do it. But having to do it every single time is is.
And I I agree with that, but I, but my thing is, is then we're selective, and then that could create, I mean, again, we go down this rabbit hole, it's it's nothing wrong with either way of us doing this. I just want to make sure, for example, that we, when that person comes up here, whether they're an absentee owner or or a Breckenridge native, you know, one of our own, that that we know beyond a shadow of doubt, we've done everything as a city to make sure they understand what we're asking them to do, be compliant. So that we don't have to sit here fighting, we don't get ten thousand.
Well, even when you send them, I I I mean, I do. Because we just had that recently. I mean, you know, every time we have, you know, dangerous buildings off the board, and, you know, they will.
Substandard now.
Right.
Like I was saying, junk vehicles, substandard cases, things like that, that are to the point of the dangerous building that need come for kit. Those would still be sent certified mail, so we know when we get those back.
Okay, see, that helps me, that that's what I was trying.
We're looking at the cases of brush, grass.
Booyah grass.
Booyah grass. Someday in the future, we'll look at maybe even the credit ID, things like that. The the ones that are not a actual danger, well, high grass can be, but I'm saying it's an immediate danger. Those things will still go up to to certified mail to make sure we're contacting the correct people and get those things done.
So if we, let's say we vote this ordinance and say we no longer have to send. Who determines, how do we, are we clear? How are we gonna be clear that what we do, like, you know, what we do send certified and what we don't? How do we determine? Where's our tip point, I guess, is the only thing I'm asking. I don't care either way. We send it out, mail runs, but you know, you always hear, I hear plenty of people, I never got the bill on the mail. Well, of course you did.
I understand. It's a situational problem, the the problem situation, like dangerous buildings and things, something falling in, anything like that. It's gonna be a basic judgment call that I'll have to make. And also even staff, I mean, on the staff.
Yep.
I mean, actually, yeah, there is gonna be discretion on the part of staff, but he's out in the field and he knows, you know, the people that he's contacted or the people, I mean, there's so many different variables to allow for, he's gonna be familiar with all of those.
Right, where you're gonna have, okay, that's fair, there's other calls for any issues, I mean, I'll be pulling it, I don't have to. I don't have to be bullish.
Yeah, it's it's one of those things where, I mean, we we know that that, I mean, I I was outside the other day and I see Debbie all the time. So it's one of those things where he's out and he knows his people, and he knows, you know, the the right, the right way to go about it. I mean, one situation may be just a a regular mail, and in another situation may be a certified letter. So it's just, you know, it's it's kind of like, like a instance with your, like a school teacher, you know, you may need a conference, you might just need a note sent home, you know, so.
My only concern is just being inconsistent. That's my whole, because I want to give you the teeth you need to clean that up, because I'll be honest.
I understand.
I just don't want, you know, Blake comes in, he doesn't get a, or he gets a certified, and he's mad at you because he knows that I did, that, you know what I mean? That that's my only sticky point. Either way, by, and by state ordinance, we don't have to do it anyway, so.
Sitting by certified, no. But legally, I don't think.
Legally, there's not much. I just try to think and I have to get some future. Okay.
We're gonna be.
We approve hundreds, hundreds of instances like that going on.
How how many have you had to, just ballpark numbers, since you've taken over?
Certified?
Well, just, just cases in in letters and.
Three hundred, there's been over three hundred since the first of.
That's why I only did that because Rob said.
Three hundred and almost ten dollars a a letter going out, that's three thousand dollars. Where if I send it out, sixty-nine cents, it's about two oh seven, so there's a large difference there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, I I like I said, I just wanted to clarify, mine, like I said, my only concern, it doesn't, legally, we don't have to, I understand, state statute says we can do it either way. I just.
I just want to make sure you understand that it's not, every one of them's not gonna go out certified. There's, if a situation calls for it, then it's going out certified, so we know who's helping, everybody's just trying to hold them, or somebody take care of the problem.
We have a metered system on stamp that we buy rolls, just out of curiosity. Okay, that's what I take.
This, you're gonna buy stamps.
You take that out of my, my commisery, thank you. Ain't gonna buy you a lot of stamps. That's fine, dude. No, I I just wanted to clarify that. That was my only concern. When I read this, I'm like, is there a gray area in here? Just thinking of the argument's coming. Which you get to deal with. Okay, thank you, sir.
We had a young lady had a question, I think.
Well, that was my question was, what is the, can you come up to the podium, please? That was my, y'all talked about what I was thinking about, which was, how do you determine whether somebody should or shouldn't get a certified? Is it, if there is a second step where certified is always gonna happen, then it makes sense that maybe the first step, it doesn't happen. But it just, I agree with you that identifying, that, yeah, selective process does open up to unfair practice or inconsistent practice that can raise questions. So, but y'all did discuss through all that.
Let me ask one more question on this, and I, this was not even the one I thought we'd get sticking on. Is there a way to add to this ordinance, this and just say, hey, look, we're gonna send them out standard mail? Hopefully seventy-five, eighty percent of them, you know, take advantage of the sixty-nine cents, but we will on the second notice, send certified every time. Because we're consistent that way. That's my only thing, is I'm looking for consistency. Because if he's selective in just being the devil's advocate.
They don't, so I'm gonna play the devil's advocate on his behalf. Part of it is, I mean, because we, you can't legislate every single thing. And I understand, you know, there's on, you know, you, you know, in the tech shop realm, they call it environmental justice. So, I mean, I understand that, that, that idea of making sure that we're consistent, we're treating everybody the same. But we're actually not, because depending on what the situation is, if it's a more dangerous situation, it will go out certified. And I'm not saying that tall grass isn't dangerous, but there's a difference between a roof falling down and tall grass. So, I mean, in the field, and plus, he's talking to these people, he's out there talking to them, making contact with them, and so he. And so he knows if somebody, you know, maybe he sent um the first one, and maybe he's gonna send that second one. Because I guess what, when, as staff, what we think about too, is that risk benefit analysis, right? And so we're trying to make sure that we're covering all those bases. We don't want to come back and have somebody say, well, we didn't know. Um so we are doing everything that we can to make sure that we don't have those scenarios, but when we send out so many high grass, for example, that, that's what really we're talking about. It's not that certified wouldn't go out, but the situation, is there so many variables, yeah, it's gonna be different. And that's why.
Wouldn't that be solved, again, wouldn't that be resolved by first one goes out mail, most people are gonna mow their grass, like, we're talking about grass right now, most people are gonna mow their grass. If not, the second one goes out certified, we go on down the road, but most people are gonna be taken care of by the sixty-nine cent stamp. Whatever that number is, and, and again, we're talking about thousands of dollars, and I get that, every thou, you know, every dollar counts in our budgets, but I just, like I said, my only issue here is we're not consistent with this. And the only, we can't say, hey, we're gonna send out a certified for this, that, because there's so many variables, you can't figure out every variable's gonna pop up. But we can say, we're gonna send you a letter sixty-nine cent. Stamp, if you don't take care of it, we're gonna send you certified, and then whatever the phases are after that.
Could, could you not, curious, on the second notice of whatever it may be, just have a stamp and put final and second notice on the envelope? Rather than, you know I don't know, that, that will strike their heads of thinking, I'm better good. You know?
Look, I understand why you're arguing, like, you know, because the uh inconsistency and all that stuff, but say it is, say I get a certified letter and you don't.
Right.
It doesn't, if there's nothing that we're doing that's illegal or shady or.
That's right.
I don't, I don't see how we would ever get in trouble, or if the person's probably gonna be upset, whether it's certified or uncertified.
Well, then compliance isn't gonna be different, you're both.
No, that's right, that's not, yeah, that's.
Right, but, but, if you're, you're thinking of some angry person that comes up, that his neighbor got certified and he didn't, and I'm getting punished. If there's nothing legally holding us to it, I don't know how it could become a, a bad situation.
There's not legal.
You know, the deal is, we do like you've been doing, I guess, and if you start running into problems, we can come back and look at it again if necessary. Take that some more action on it. See, it seem like what you're doing now is going all right.
Well, the reason we brought it to you is to try to save money, because right now, we've already, we've already spent three thousand, there's not even the end of.
And just to add something else, I've worked for three other cities. The other three cities, we sent, we did not send every one of them out by certified mail. It was only the dangerous situations, GB type stuff, that, those type of things were sent by certified mail.
And you'd know when to send it out necessarily.
I hope so, sir.
Why we hired him?
Yeah.
That's why we paid him a big bill.
I'm, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten as presented.
Thank you. Most second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed. All right, we've done item twenty. We'll go to item twenty-one. Discussion in necessary action regarding Stevens County interlocal agreement for demo of stand, substandard homes.
So you guys. I'm sorry, I have the original. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, I was just talking about that, thank you. Um so on this one, the only update here is there um the BED, we, you guys have already seen this and approved it. Uh but the change here is the BEDC wanted to limit it to twenty thousand um annually, which would be basically five, and so um the county has updated that and incorporated that change, and so you guys have to approve it. So the only change is you, you know, capping it.
Capping, instead of unlimited, it's now four thousand each time, maximum four thousand each time, up to five times or twenty grand a year.
Right, right, and the date changed on the term, the date that we had on here, from the date that was on y'all's file line. Right, it ended on April fourteen of twenty twenty-six.
Yep.
Those would, yeah, those are the changes. But I have the city county sign and the, and the EDC sign, so that's just set.
No questions? Motion?
Move to approve the update in Stevens County interlocal agreement for demo of substandard homes as presented.
Second, motion is second, all in favor? None opposed, item twenty-two, discussion in necessary action regarding award of construction bid for TWDB DWS RL project.
Um, okay, so um good news, um all of these projects that have been in planning and design for almost three years now. Um one, um the construction RFP has been um put out there, and so that's what we're talking about, is, and this is on the water line project, so we've got Sage here with EHT, and he's gonna explain all of that to you. Thanks for coming out.
I knew you'd get in here somehow, and I'll be.
I thought I was lost when I walked in this room, this is great, I've been to a lot of meetings in that room, this is really good.
So as Cynthia said, um I don't think you have it all in your packet, there's a, a letter of recommendation, but there's also the bid tabulation. Um there is a map of the alternate locations um that were included in the bid, and there is a summary of the budget available um which is a two point one million dollars. Um on this funding package, there will be a follow-up contract to make improvements at the water treatment plant and at the Lake Daniels raw water intake. Um so we are leaving funds available for that work, which will be uh coming in the near future, once approved by the Water Development Board, which we are waiting on. Um so two point four, two point one four million dollars is what we have available. What I am proposing, what I'm recommending, the base bid um as shown on the screen, uh was, the lowest base bid was submitted by Radon Incorporated at one million five oh nine three forty-seven. Um to fully utilize the available funding, the two point one four million. I am proposing we uh award also additive alternate number two um which is the section of line over on East Wheeler Street. And that amount is eight hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty cents. Those two combined are two million three hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty cents. Um that is a little over the available funding, but what I would propose is we follow up with a subsequent change order uh to reduce that contract amount uh once we award, after we award this one. Um there's a couple of things that I think we'll be able to save some money on, we have several uh insertion valves identified in the bidding documents. In case the old valves don't work, contractor has to go in there and, and install an insert valve. Those are more expensive than your normal standard gate valves. Um I'm hoping that the gate, that gate valves actually that are there work, and we don't have to use all those expensive insert valves. That will help save funding, um and then get us more in line with the available funds uh for the water line placement portion. Uh these other alternates will be considered in the, the upcoming um rural water assistance funds, which the city will be closing on in the near future, um which is another grant, it's a ninety percent grant, I believe. Seventy percent grant, uh coming from the Texas Water Development Board.
I like his number better.
So uh all of these lines, uh water lines need to be replaced, they're old cast iron, they're, they're, they cause leaks, they're, they're problematic. Um and we're gonna continue knocking them off the list as with the funding becomes available. But what I'm proposing, um which would be the base bid, which is West Williams and West Elm, and then include additive alternate number two, which is East Wheeler Street, with a subsequent change order to reduce it down within the budget. Any questions?
Save money.
Um we're trying to maximize the dollars there.
Questions, anybody?
I move to award the TWDB DWS RF construction to the lowest and best bidder, Radon Inc., and offer as city manager to negotiate the contract.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Item twenty-three. Discussion in necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine supporting Tech stocks twenty twenty-five transportation alternate set aside TA call for projects.
So if you remember, I talked about this in just my city manager update, so this is a resolution of support for the grant program. Essentially, is they're doing everything, they've got some money that they're trying to get out to the local communities. I mean, there's a ninety-five percent chance that we'll move on in this first round, but twenty percent chance that we'll get awarded this grant, but um it will, if we do get, it will be um a hundred percent funded unless it goes over, and we would be responsible for the overages. Right now, they're estimating it to be two point four million dollars, and again, this is sidewalk improvements on both your side and the south side, along with um ADA improvements um sidewalks from Wilson to Sunset. And this is a resolution of support for the project.
Move.
What? No question, have a motion?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine as, as presented.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed? All of it? Any item y'all want to think about for next time around? Not right now, we can do that, you know, you'll have time to, nothing? Okay, at six thirty-four PM, we are adjourned, thank all of you.
So.
No, thanks, I don't think I've heard of that, go.